We're very, very close, I think. There we go. All now? Excellent. Good. So, we're very, very close to 6:30, depending on which clock or what you look at. So, I'm gonna go ahead and get us rolling. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, September 6th regularly scheduled council meeting. We've got quite a few smiling faces in the crowd. That's good. Happy people. That's what we like. But, welcome tonight. Having said that, Kim, if you'd please call the roll.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Pillion.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Here.
And Mayor Webb.
Here.
Here. Got some here's and ayes, but we're all here. That's what matters. That's what matters. And at this point in time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Amanda Pillion to lead us in the pledge of words.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Pillion. And at this time, I'd like to ask Stephen Bednar to come up and lead us in prayer. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. It's good to be up here again. Let's pray. God, we thank you for this wonderful day that you have given to us, a day where we can come together and talk about your creation, talk about how you have put us in positions to be good stewards of this land, of this town, of this area, this region. I pray that you would extend your hand of favor upon these that are in front of us tonight. I pray for each of the councilmembers. I pray for Dwayne. I pray for Amanda. Pray for Donna, for Derek, and for Mike. I pray that you would help them to serve with equity and justice, help them to have on their minds what is right for the people. I pray that you would establish in them hearts that are full of joy, of peace, of patience, of kindness, of goodness, gentleness, self-control, of love, that their actions would be marked by these traits, that your spirit would move among them and help them as they deliberate, as they have conversations, as they deal with issues, whether it's small or large, however many people it affects, that they would constantly have on their minds how best to honor you and to serve the people that have put their faith in them. I pray for the rest of those onstage. I pray for the town manager, the council, and the clerks. I pray that you would continue to use them mightily to enact fairness and justice here. I thank you for the time that you have given to us. I pray that we would honor it. I pray that we would honor you, and pray that in all things, your name would be lifted high by what happens. We pray these things in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you, Stephen. Beautiful prayer. All right, council, at this time, I'd entertain an approval of the agenda. I will note that unfortunately, we're gonna have to postpone the proclamation honoring the Abingdon High School Boys Track Team for capturing the Triple Crown for VHL last year. I don't think we really officially have to do that in the agenda approval that we can, do we?
I would amend it, yeah.
All right, good deal. So, with that being said, I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda and discount that item and table it for next meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Pillion. Do I have a second?
You can incorporate that.
I'll say.
Adopting the agenda as amended.
Okay. All right. So, we're gonna adopt the agenda as amended. Thank you, Cam, for keeping me on the right path. Second by Mr. Anderson. Any discussion, council? Hearing none. Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Pillion.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
And Mayor Webb.
Aye. And that brings us to public comments. We've got a couple of people signed up today. And when we call you up, you do have three minutes. So, first up, we've got Ms. Frazier, if you'll come.
Oh, he answered it. Oh, yeah, he took his.
Oh, so you don't?
I told him that you were.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, that was, you know, honestly, that was the quickest public comments I've ever had. I feel like we need to give her a trophy or something. But, thank you for coming to the meeting. And then, we've got Rachel. Are you coming up? Come on up, Ms. Sheff. It's two times in one day.
It's two times in one day. How are y'all doing this evening? Well, my only question is, I talked to Officer Holbrook back there as well. One evening, me and my friend had left the house. I get off late work, late at night, 'cause I work the third shift at my job. And I noticed on the creeper trail, there was a cop. We actually went to the gas station. He saw it, followed us. We went to Exxon. Then, he pulled to the side of the road to another parking lot. I thought everything was cool. Then, he follows us back halfway home. Left off of Madison Street, and he says, "See your license and registration." I thought that was a little strange. You've got all these other people out there late at nights at the gas station. That got a little concerned by profile. I shouldn't say that, but it did get to me. And the other thing I had an issue with is, we got a lot of strange people off that creeper trail, and people walking around in the neighborhood. I addressed it with Mr. Anderson. I haven't everything, and you know, just have some watch around there, just in case. 'Cause there's too many strange people. And yesterday, I had a neighbor, a man was looking through into her house, and I let her know on the corner there. So, I don't know. I believe they're coming from the trail. But, my concern was one, that the police, do they supposed to just pull me?
Just so you know, we're not really allowed to engage in public comments.
No.
But, yeah, I do appreciate your concerns.
But, I've already talked with Dr. I met with Holbrook and everything. But, you know, I know concern. I know people run late at night on that creeper trail. But, I don't know. And then, the cars and everything.
Absolutely. Well, I highly encourage you to talk that out with Chief. He'll take care of it.
I do. Thank you.
Thank you, dear. Uh-huh. All right. That takes us through public comments. Council, at this time, we're at the approval of minutes, the August 8th, 2022 meeting, and the August 18th, 2022 meeting. I know we had a couple of people missing from the 18th, so we may take those up separately. Would be the best thing to do. So, council, I would approve, or I would entertain the approval of the August 8th, 2022 meeting minutes.
I'll make that.
Motion by Vice Mayor Quetch. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Pillion. Any discussion, council? Hearing none. Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Pillion.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
And Mayor Webb.
Aye. And then, the August 18th, like I said, we had a couple of councilmembers that weren't present, so I assume they won't vote on those minutes. But, I would entertain a motion to approve those as well.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Vice Mayor Quetch. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Second by Mr. Anderson. Any discussion, council? Hearing none. Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens.
Abstain.
Mr. Anderson. Ms. Pillion.
Abstain.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
And Mayor Webb.
Aye. I apologize, council. I hope I made that clear enough. I think we got through. Cam, we okay? All right, good. As long as we're legal, we're fine. That's it. All right. So, for proclamations, as I alluded to earlier, the Boys Track Team couldn't be here tonight, and we hate that, but they are gonna visit us next month at the first October meeting, correct, Kim?
Correct.
Is that right? Okay, excellent. And then, number two, we do have a proclamation celebrating the Constitution started by the Daughters of the American Revolution, designating September 17th through 24th, 2022, as Constitution Week. Ms. Pillion has the proclamation, if she'd like to read that.
Proclamation, the celebration of the Constitution started by the Daughters of the American Revolution. Whereas, the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas, September 17th, 2022, marks the 240 anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas, Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a yearly proclamation by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through 24th, 2022, as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I and the rest of council, under the authority of Derek Webb vested in him as the mayor of the town of Abingdon, Virginia, to hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2022, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties.
Thank you, Ms. Pillion. Do we have anybody here tonight?
We have Ms. Thurmond.
All right. I thought so. It's picture time, if you'll have one with us. Thank you so much. I'm gonna present you with that. Counsel, if you wanna get a picture with her? Yes. Just a tad there. Yeah.
Sorry.
Can I turn it this way?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we'd like to tell you that we are, by support, we are, we're celebrating our 101st year celebration this year. We wanted to do it 100th year last year because of the Bible. We're very pleased with all the help you give us. You're all very kind to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right. That brings us to public hearings. We don't have any of those tonight. We do have a resolution supporting the Virginia Highway Safety Improvement Program. Mr. Mike Sareth, come on up, Director of Public Works.
Trying to make this as quick and painless as possible. What we presented is a resolution of support for the Virginia Highway Safety Improvement Program. BDOT has opened up their safety improvement program again this year for funding. We're planning on putting in some applications for some local initiative safety projects. And just like it says in the resolution, for some high visibility factplates, some flashing yellow arrows, some curb delineation, and some pedestrian crossings, and some road dides. As part of the, excuse me, as part of the application, we have to have a resolution of support from the town that says that we support that, and we hope that you would approve this resolution.
Sure. Counsel, what questions we have for Mr. Sareth? Anything? I think we're all pretty much on the same page when it comes to safety improvements within the town.
And just to let y'all know that whatever, if these projects do get funded, they are 100% funded through BDOT.
Fantastic.
And they'll be on a 12-month cycle.
Fantastic. Fantastic. So, just out of curiosity, if that happens, when would we hope to see some of these things rolling?
Next year.
Next year?
First, next year.
Part of my evening, your toy is road die.
Road die. If you, for an example, if you took Coming Street, because it's a sea of asphalt, you could change some of the pavement markings. You can put in medians, turn lanes, kind of create a, an area that is more advantageous to traffic control in road diets. You can add bike lanes. You could do things like that. Kind of the three areas that the staff has been looking at is East Main Street, where we have the five-lane section, West Main Street, where the other five-lane section is, and Coming Street is the big ones for road diet at this point. But, this HZ program's gonna be open every year. So, it's a yearly application process for projects. So, every year, we'll be able to add some more and more to our safety initiatives.
And I see. Is this a brand-new program, or is this something we've?
It is actually an older program, but BDOT had tabled it for the last couple of years. And this year, since I guess all the federal money's coming back, they're bringing it back. 'Cause, you know, some of the projects we did previously were some pedestrian bike and ped projects to add sidewalk and stuff. So, hopefully, next year, they'll open that portion of it back up again. But, this year, it's just for safety initiatives.
Excellent. Counsel, any other questions? All right. Cam, I assume we need to adopt that resolution?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
I'll second that.
Excellent. Man, y'all on it tonight. Motion by Mr. Owens to adopt the resolution. Second by Mr. Anderson. Any discussion, council? Hearing none. Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Pillion.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
And Mayor Webb.
Aye. You got all feisty tonight, Mike. That's it. All right. Excuse me. We don't have any first or second readings of ordinances tonight. No consideration of bids that I know of. Mike, are we, Mike Cochran, are we missing anything there?
No, we're good.
Too many mics in the room at one time?
Yeah. Who's the Irish?
That's it. So, for new business, we do have a presentation tonight from Virginia Highlands Festival. Mr. Anderson, come on up.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, council. I too, I'm gonna try to beat that record there. Try to be quick. I do, I'm just gonna set my alarm here. So, no longer than five minutes, I promise y'all. My name's Ryan Henderson. I'm the board president for the Virginia Highlands Festival. And I just wanted to, first off, say that we appreciate the continued support and collaboration with the town of Abingdon and its staff. And I'm here just to give a brief summary of the summer festival, as well as a preview of what's coming for the rest of the year. But, before we do that, there's a quick, one-minute video that was put together by Anthony Keys and edited by Christine Webb, and it kind of just shows you a little bit about what we had going on this summer. So, at the end of the day, we really value partnerships, building community, building relationships. And just to highlight real briefly, some of the events at the Highlands Festival that we're proud of. There's so many to talk about, but in just a few minutes, one of the things that we really wanted to focus on this year is the youth component, which we hadn't had for the last few years. That's something that was really successful this year. Hannah Eiken of Spot of Color collaborated with us. She brought a lot of different, unique, and engaging activities to the festival and to the youth tent. The squirt gun painting was a particular success. There were also a lot of different activities that she brought, and I think that partnership was amazing. And that's something that we can build upon for next year. And speaking of that, Community Day was also something that we tried for the first time this year, first time ever in the festival. And actually, for the first time in about a decade or so, the summer festival is back on the Martha lawn. Now, it was only for one day, but because of the success of that, we want to build on that, possibly make it multiple days. But, you know, our partnership was with Martha as well, has been going really well over the last few years, and that's something we want to continue to build on. We also had a really successful and new event called the Chef Dinner Event. It's a culinary event. It was at the Hickory Restaurant. And it's events like this that help to really fund and subsidize a lot of the other programming for the festival. We know that relying on ticket revenue alone is not gonna be a sustainable thing. So, diversifying revenue streams is really important. So, not only are we really aggressive with grants, like through the VCA and the VTC, we also are aggressive with sponsorships like that of Food City. And the town of Abingdon has been a very gracious partner there, but as well as events like the Chef Event. All of those things helped to keep the festival open. We want to be even more accessible than we were this year. Some of you, if you've been keeping your ear to the ground, I just keep hammering home, 75% of our 200 programs this year were free to the public. We want to do better than that moving forward. But, that's a great start, and that's due in large part to our partnerships with the town of Abingdon, Food City, our sponsorships, and then our partners like Hickory. And I mean, I can name William King, which, let's just, that brings me right up to what we're about to do this coming year, just to end the year. We've got a couple events, and that is Plan Air is the next thing that's coming up. That's October 6th through the 8th. I got 32 seconds that I just self-imposed, but we're gonna be good. October 6th to the 8th, that's good. Some of our partners, not just William King, but also the Abingdon Vineyard is a partner with that. And then, to close the season, is our Holiday Market. It'll be the Third Annual Holiday Market. That originally began when we couldn't have a festival in 2020, so we had a little winter gathering, winter festival, so to speak, on the Martha lawn. So, that's something that we're building toward. But, I just wanted to say thank you again. And if there is any way, this is gonna be so loud and annoying, I should've thought about this beforehand. Okay, good. I stopped it. Perfect. We're always pursuing how we can better serve the town and better serve our community. So, if there's ever any way that you feel like we can improve our efforts, we are open and willing to that, and we're just grateful for the time and the opportunity. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
And you know, just to touch on the Highlands Festival, I think it seemed to be just a huge success again this year, even with some inclement weather and not ideal circumstances. I've heard great feedback, and I was very impressed with everything that I saw, and I'm sure the council felt the same way. So, thank you for your hard work.
Hard work, thank you.
Absolutely. And that brings us to another exciting venture, a presentation regarding the Washington County Public Library Story Walk. Molly Shock, come on up. Library Director and Amanda Bailey for Communication Engagement and Information.
Good evening. I just want to say thank you to the council for supporting the library. And I'm very excited about this new opportunity for a partnership between the town and the library.
And I'm gonna talk fast.
You don't have, this is not a competition now.
Story Walk, we're hoping to be over at the Meadows. The Story Walk, as you can see, there are panels. We take apart a book and put like a page or two on each part of the panel. And it's part of an initiative, let's move in libraries, get kids walking, get families walking, and enjoy reading. And it's really gonna bring the library to people that wouldn't normally, you know, maybe come see us. So, let's see. Here's our little family looking at the Story Walk. It's all weatherproof. And only one book is harmed in the making of it. But, we're hoping to be between the soccer field and baseball field. And I've got a little map that I'll share with you. But, they'll, it's, you place them kind of nice walking distance apart to get you going as you read. And there's room on there for branding, so if you want to put the town logo on there, or the Kiwanis Club logo, and the library logo. And I'll just plug Kiwanis there, 'cause I said, "Do you want to pay for it?" And they said, "Sure." So, this is at no cost to the town. Kiwanis Club is gonna pick up the cost of the pedestals, and they're gonna install it. But, it's nice. Lots of other libraries have done it. And the Kingsport Public Library has it at Three Parks, if you'd like to see it in action. Lots of fun stuff, so we hope you'll support our little pitch there. And that's on the website.
So, the way I understand it, you're gonna, someone will be changing it monthly. Is that how I understand it?
Yeah. So, it's, the story changes monthly, and depending on how long the story is, we'll have it like maybe an extra pedestal at each end to promote things like the Highlands Festival.
What about the winter months?
We would still do. It's part of our plan.
Is it pretty laborious having to get out there and put, I mean, is it pretty easy to access?
It's made to change out, and you, we would have that back sheet already printed, and then we would just change out the book.
Okay, cool, cool.
We're hoping to get one in Damascus, too. So, we're going cowie-wog.
That's really cool. I think it's a great idea. It's certainly a good way for the library to be involved, as well as Kiwanis. I think that's fantastic. They've stepped up to pay for it. 'Cause I'm sure it's not super cheap.
No. But, it's, you know, it's meant to be sturdy. It's meant to be outside.
Well, you all have heard me say this before, and I think the council would probably resonate what I'm about to say. But, you know, I think our intent for the Meadows was truly to give something to everybody, you know? And that's just another feather in the hat, a wonderful thing that children can learn and be entertained by while their siblings are perhaps playing games and things. So, I think that's a really cool way to promote the town and the library and Kiwanis, for that matter, so.
And we think we're a good spot, not too close to the splash pad, 'cause it is weatherproof.
Yeah.
It might not be splash pad proof, so.
Oh, I can see 'em running from the splash pad and checking out the books, for sure. Yeah. No, that's great. Well, thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you.
Counsel, do we have any other questions for them while they're here? Or? No? All right. Excellent. I assume we don't need any kind of, it's just something that you'll take care of. Mr. Cochran?
Yeah, and I checked with, yeah, they like the fact that someone else is paying for it, someone else is maintaining it. They like that a lot, so, yeah.
It's always good. Yeah, always good. Thank you, Cam. It's very exciting. I don't know of any old business to speak of, but I'm sure that we're gonna have some miscellaneous business and communications from Mr. Cochran. What you got?
So, what we have is, last month, we were waiting on the Court Street to get implemented, and since then, it has been implemented. And I went by it today and checked on it. It's actually working exactly like when Mike and I had talked about it, to get it in place. So, if you haven't been by there, the barriers are now in place, and people are parking, it's one-way, and people are parking on both sides, so the businesses can still maintain their customer base, and the court can still operate the way they need to operate. So, it's nice to see an actual plane that carries out, and it's actually working. So, it's good to have. And other than that, I don't have a whole lot, but it just was nice to see that it actually works.
Yeah.
And it's actually in place.
You know, something interesting, I had the privilege to go out and talk with some of the business owners last week. And something that came up, and this is probably a good time to say, you know, this, and I want to make sure everybody understands, this is a temporary traffic adjustment. But, in the event that the town citizens embraced it and said, "We love it. We want it to stay," something kind of interesting, and I think, Mike, you're probably gonna know what I'm gonna say, if people wanted it to stay one-way down Court Street, that would provide the opportunity when construction's finished for an awful lot of diagonal parking on the sides of the roads. And the business owners actually brought that up. It is an interesting concept, something we may want to look into down the road.
I think it's a good idea, Derek.
I mean, it could buy 20, 30 parking places. I don't know. Mike, have you done a study on that, or looked at that specifically? But, I mean, it would net quite a few parking places and maybe mitigate some of the parking issues we have, as well as gives kind of direct access to those businesses. So, I'm not saying that anybody's for this right now. I'm just throwing the concept out there, so people get a taste, just a little nibble, right?
Yeah, because you think about when these buildings were built, they had horses. Yeah, because you think about when these buildings were built, they had horses, you know, some of them, so...
Well, that's what we should do, we should put horse and buggy spots out...
Yeah, we could put some latching posts out front.
That's it, that's it. Well, thank you for that update, yeah, it is working quite well, from what I can tell. Thank you. Anything else tonight?
No, good, thanks.
Well, we'll move on to the council member reports, and I can tell that everybody's got a council member report they want to make. Anybody? Anybody? No? Well, thank you all for your hard work, that's what I'm gonna say. We've all been very busy, and I appreciate what you do. That brings us to appointments to boards and committees. We have quite a few, council, do we plan on going into closed session, I assume? No? Do we have enough applicants to justify doing that, or...
I think these are all reappointments, and I think we just easily do that.
Okay. If everybody's good with it, then we'll skim through.
I'm good with it, yes.
Okay, excellent. All right. So first up is the Board of Zoning Appeals, a reappointment of Heather Howard, who is eligible to serve an additional term. Counsel, I'll open the floor to do that reappointment, if so desired.
I'll make the motion.
A motion by Vice Mayor Quetch to reappoint Heather Howard, is that what I understood?
Yes.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Owens, any discussion, council? Hearing none. Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Ms. Pillion.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
And Mayor Whip.
Aye. Then we've got the Recreational Advisory Committee, a reappointment of David Childress, I think that's supposed to be Childers, I believe, just for the record, and who is eligible to serve an additional term, and the reappointment of Amanda Pillion, who is eligible to serve an additional term. Counsel, if we're okay with these, I'd open the floor for that reappointment.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint David Childress and Amanda Pillion to the Recreation Advisory Committee.
Motion by Mr. Owens to reappoint both David Childress and Amanda Pillion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Anderson, any discussion, council? Hearing none. Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Ms. Pillion.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
And Mayor Whip.